We're ready. While we're not exactly ready, but we are. We are still one shy of a term, but we are going to start several presentations before we begin this meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. So I will call Mr. Ridley Thomas first for a presentation.
Madam President, members of the council. We have a special anniversary to celebrate this Saturday. Some thirty years ago, on April 22, 1970, about twenty million Americans got together to spread the word that every individual has a responsibility to protect our environment. The idea caught on, and this Saturday, that same message will be heard more loudly and more clearly by an estimated five hundred million people in some thirty-five hundred organizations in one hundred and sixty-eight countries around the world. You may know that I'm speaking of the thirtieth anniversary of Earth Day, which will be celebrated Saturday in Los Angeles with a grand event at Exposition Park. But before I go any further with the details about Earth Day, one of our very own, Madam President, has been honored by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, Region Nine, as the, as this year's recipient of the Earth Day Two Thousand Award. So, members of the council, will you join me in congratulating our council president, Pro Tim Ruth Galanta, for that recognition as the EPA's Region Nine recipient of the Year for Earth Day? Ruth, we want to congratulate you.
Very slick, Mark. Nicely done. Thank you.
In phrases like environmentally friendly, clean and green, and sustainable development, well, in 1970, these were phrases that many heard for the first time. Today, they are part of our daily vocabulary, political parlance, and a part of the civic consciousness that envelops discussions around environmental issues. We've come a long way since then in identifying environmental problems and taking steps to address them. We've seen the power of individuals as they work together in neighborhoods and local communities. We've seen what can be accomplished when people share awareness of a common problem and together put their energies into solving those problems. But it seems like the more we learn and the more we accomplish, there is much more that we need to do. Earth Day itself is an opportunity to begin a new millennium by rallying together people in one voice and working collaboratively to drive home the message once again that a healthy environment is up to each of us. This year's Earth Day event in L.A., called Earth Fair Two Thousand, is being organized by Hill the Bay in cooperation with the county and the city of Los Angeles. We have guests with us today who are heading these efforts and who are here to accept this city's Earth Day Two Thousand resolution. And so I'd like to call forward those persons who are here, most particularly the program director for Hill the Bay, Alex DeRosa, representatives from the Environmental Affairs Department, both the general manager and the assistant general manager. We'll ask them to come forth, and we're also going to ask the council president, Pro Tim, if she would come forward and join us as we move forward with this presentation. All right, Ms. DeRosa. This is on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, and it is a resolution that essentially communicates that we recognize April 22 as Earth Day Two Thousand. And we pledge our commitment to undertaking programs and projects that enhance the community's natural environment and encourages all the people of the city of Los Angeles to celebrate the earth and commit to building a sustainable society. And we present this on behalf of the entirety of the Los Angeles City Council. And we'll now hear from Ms. Galanta, our co-honoree.
What is there to add? The only thing missing off that, and we're looking for the original proclamation, is that the city council has officially gone on record not only supporting the earth, but also supporting environmental justice. And it is certainly my hope that as we move forward with this Earth Day celebration and future ones, we will also keep in mind that environmental protection has not always been applied as equally and as justly as it should be, and we have lots of work to do to fix that. But I am very proud of the fact that this city and our Department of Environmental Affairs in particular has been the forefront of the environmental justice movement, and we fully intend to keep it that way. So congratulations to all of you for your hard work and to all of the many people throughout the city who've been involved with this. There's a lot more to do.
Now we hear from Ms. DeRosa, followed by Dee Allen with the Environmental Affairs Department. Alex?
Well, thank you very much. We are honored to have this. This is our third celebration of Earth Day. So Hill the Bay has put together Earth Fair Two Thousand in celebration of the theme of sustainability. And so we really hope that everyone can join us, starting out in Pershing Square for a Clean Energy Ride, culminating at Exposition Park for a celebration, variety of nonprofit booths, education, and activities for children, and then a finale concert in the evening. So we hope that people can join us, take alternative transportation to the site. There's plenty of information on Hill the Bay's webpage, as well as Earth Day Los Angeles's webpage. So thank you very much.
We'd just like to thank the city council for their commitment, and also Hill the Bay for their commitment to the environment, as we clean the environment for the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. We thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. I think Ms. Goldberg? Is it council member Goldberg?
President of the council, members of the council, because of the variety of holiday changes, we're going to be talking about some things that are really taking place next week in the United States and around the world that commemorate the Armenian genocide. We have some presentations from the Armenian community here today. And actually, I'm just going to let you start, and then I have some comments that I will make afterward.
Good morning. My name is Gary Kenyon. On behalf of the Armenian National Committee, Hollywood, North Hollywood, San Fernando Valley Chapters, I would like to thank the city council for giving us this opportunity again to commemorate together the 1915 Armenian genocide by the Ottoman Turkish government. We have a very short program, but before we start, our special thank you to Bazarcler Tomassian, council member Jackie Goldberg's aide. Now I would like to invite the prelate of the Armenian Apostolic Church, Western United States, His Grace Bishop Mushar Madirosian, to the podium to give us his grace and thoughts. Following Bishop Madirosian is ANC Western Regions Executive Director, Mr. Vikeen Papazian.
President of the council, council members, we thank our Lord for granting us this unique opportunity to address this esteemed body, our Los Angeles City Council. We humbly praise His name for the freedom, social justice, and equal rights that our rapidly growing Armenian community enjoys in the great city of Los Angeles with renewed faith, confidence, commitment, and loyalty to the sublime ideals of the founding fathers. As we are assembled here to witness democracy in action, we beseech Lord to grace the leadership of our multicultural community with His divine wisdom and guidance. We believe that He will inspire and fortify the council members with His unbound love and compassion to shoulder their responsibilities with equity and justice for all. We ask Him to lead them with courage, benevolence, and magnanimity to serve and lead them with courage, benevolence, for the glory, splendor, and sanctity of our city. Dear council members, as we embark on a new century which provides hope of a kinder, more principled world, the Armenians of Greater Los Angeles join the entire Armenian people in solemnly commemorating the eighty-fifth anniversary of the first genocide of the last century, a century stained by mass murder and other disturbing examples of man's inhumanity to man. Today, in commemoration of Armenian Martyrs' Day, we ask you to join us in offering prayers for the reports of the souls of millions of our martyrs and to pay homage and tribute to their loving memory, as well as to the memory of martyrs of all peace-loving nations and peoples who have fallen victim to inhuman brutal acts perpetrated by ruthless despots. We greatly appreciate this city council resolution remembering the Armenian genocide and for its efforts to forestall and deter any and all premeditated attempts that might once again plunge humanity into one more horrific event. May our God grace this esteemed body with His blessings in fulfillment of their noble mission. Thank you all, and God bless you.
Esteemed members of the city council, thank you for affording us this opportunity to share this occasion with you. It's a painful occasion for many of us and for many of those seated right behind me. But it is an occasion worth remembering because it has severe and dire consequences for all mankind. As you, I'm sure you know, members of the city council, the Armenian community is not unlike other communities in that they, within this community, we have a wide range of community organizations with divergent political views. But on one issue, we agree unequivocally, that is, the need to condemn genocide and the need to redress the wrongs that have occurred, not limited, of course, to the Armenian genocide, but also the Holocaust, the Cambodian genocide, the genocide Rwanda, and other cases of mass murder and politically motivated manipulations by despots. cases of mass murder and politically motivated manipulations by despots. I would like to take one moment and recognize some of the community organizations that have joined us today. We have the Armenian Relief Society with us, the Armenian Youth Federation, the Homen and Men Athletic Union, the Armenian Council of America, the Armenian Rights Council of America, a number of organizations that stand behind this momentous occasion, that stand behind the call for justice for the Armenian people. One thing that we firmly believe, members of the city council, is that your sign of respect and display of respect for our community by allowing us to come here today and address you is not only a generous act on your part, but also a call to those who seek to continue to distort and deny the history of the Armenian genocide. This is an ongoing genocide since, to this day, the Turkish government seeks through academic means, political means, to distort and deny the truth. And for that reason, your support for our community is doubly important. Once again, I thank you for affording us this opportunity to appear before you today and remember the 1.5 million victims of the Armenian genocide. A few of the survivors are with me today, and I'd like to acknowledge them for their bravery and their perseverance in overcoming a very, very difficult time. Thank you.
Before you leave, Councilman Fuhr wanted to be heard.
Well, if you, if we could, let us just finish all of it, and then we have just a couple more pieces. I wanted to start first by presenting to the council Hagop Der Bogozhin, who is an Armenian genocide survivor. He was born in 1920 at Dorot Yol Cecilia. The Armenian genocide, which was conceived and carried out by the Ottoman Empire, resulted in the deportation of about 2 million Armenians, of whom a million and a half men, women, and children were killed. Hagop Der Bogozhin was born in 1920 to a mother whose entire family was massacred during that genocide. And we really wanted to express, and I speak for my colleagues in the city of Los Angeles, our sadness at these events and our grieving with you for the loss of a family and to tell you of our respect for your life and for what you have done with it overcoming great odds. Finally, let me just say that we have a resolution presented by all 15 council members, and it deals with a commemoration, the 85th commemoration. It reminds us that whether it was the middle passage in which we have no idea the number of African lives that were lost, being brought against their will to this part of the hemisphere, to this world, or whether we're talking about genocide against Jews or Cambodians, Rwandans or Armenians, we're talking about crimes against all of humanity that we are talking about. In this particular case, between 1915 and 1923, 2 million deportations of Armenians, most of whom perished, most of whom who were killed, expelled from homelands, and eliminating, in essence, a 2,500-year presence of Armenians in their historic homeland. We're talking about the efforts of U.S. Ambassador Henry Morgenthau, who tried at the time, led protests, who tried at the time to raise the issue, and described to the United States Department of State a campaign of race extermination against the Armenians. We talk about the fact that each time a Holocaust or a genocide is attempted or take place, it makes it more likely that another one could be attempted or take place, and that all of us, all of us, have a responsibility to say never again. We are talking about a bill in the Congress of the United States, House Resolution 398, which would say that there should be calling upon the president to provide for appropriate training and materials to foreign service officers that involve the idea of how to respond to human rights, ethnic cleansing, and other genocide issues. We're talking about the need, because you cannot prevent repeating history if you do not understand history, for all of us to understand the history, not just of our own nation, not just of Armenians, but of all people who have been otherwise assaulted by a variety of attempts for ethnic cleansing of one type or another, even including the events of today. And now therefore be it resolved by the adoption of this resolution, the city council of the city of Los Angeles joins me in supporting H.R. 398, the United States Training and Commemoration of the Armenian Genocide Resolution, and urges swift passage by Congress, and that we also affirm our recognition of the Armenian genocide and the failure of domestic and international authorities to prevent and post the event, to punish those responsible for these types of atrocities. And there are behind me now a variety of members of the leadership of the Armenian community, and I would like, on all of your behalf, council members, to present this resolution to them. We'll take some pictures in the back, too. It'll be a lot easier.
Now are you ready to hear from Mr. Fuhr?
Thank you very much.
Chair recognizes Councilman Fuhr.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Just a few days ago, I was able to share some time with members of the Armenian community at a church in my district discussing the genocide. And we discussed that there is so much left to do. There have been really good efforts by this city to consistently recognize the horror of genocide wherever it's put in place, including the Armenian genocide through Ms. Goldberg's recognition year in and year out, which is very important. But we discussed at the church last week that only a few months ago, not very far from that church, at a high school, Armenian kids, Latino kids, and other kids were involved in a series of fights that were precipitated only because people were different from each other, only because of race. We have to transmit the values that are being brought to us this morning to our children at a very early age consistently, and our work in this city is just beginning. It's far from finished, as was exemplified by that fight just a few short months ago. And I, all of us obviously stand in honor of the survivors who are here, in honor of those who were lost. But I think we probably are most focused on trying to do whatever we can to assure such events can never occur in the future. And in this council, we do have a great deal to do, especially regarding our children, to be sure that we're effective in that effort for years to come. Very glad to have you here on this commemoration of a horrible event, but the commemoration is itself exceptionally important for us.
Thank you all very much for coming. Chair recognizes Mr. Fuhr again for an introduction.
Thank you, Madam President. Could our delegation from Notre Dame High School please stand up?
They left.
They left?
Yeah.
Already? Well, a delegation from Notre Dame High School was here, and perhaps they'll return, Madam President.
All right, in that case, we'll recognize Mrs. Chick for an introduction.
Madam President?
Whoops, Mr. Padilla.
Just wanted to confirm that Councilmember Fuhr is telling the truth. I rode on the elevator the way up from the first floor with them.
Were they up or going up or going down?
They were coming up, so they do exist, and they were here.
Okay, now, Mrs. Chick.
Okay, well, I think I do have some real students who are present to introduce. Would the Public Policy and Management Class from the University of Southern California please stand up?
There they are.
No, they're, they're all the way in the back. Colleagues, with Professor Wala Hall, this is a class that studies the diversity of the city of Los Angeles through civic, legal, cultural, and historical perspectives, from Alvera Street to Venice Beach, from the First African Methodist Episcopal Church to the Omar Ibn al-Qadab Mosque, Bunker Hill, City Hall. And this is their annual visit to City Hall to study how we do things, how city government works, the future policymakers of Los Angeles. Welcome to City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we are now ready to begin the meeting, so the formal part of the meeting. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bernsen, Chick, Fuhr, Galanter, Goldberg, Hernandez, Holden, Misakowski, Pajekko, Padilla, Ridley, Thomas, Svaric, Wax, Walters, Ferraro, 13 members present in the form. Madam President.
Thank you. Let's go to the first item.
Before beginning the regular, excuse me, approval of the minutes.
Ah, yes, okay. Without objection, the minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
How do we get those on the front end of the meeting? But that's fine. We'll approve those as well. Okay.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there are several items to continue. Item number one, the applicant consents to continuance to May 3rd.
All right, is there any objection to continuing item number one? That will be continued to May 3rd.
Items 28 and 29, request to continue for 30 days to May 19th.
Any objection to that? In that case, they're continued to May 19th.
Item 30, as a re, the violations have been corrected, and that item should be received and filed.
All right, we'll receive and file item 30.
Item 41, refer to Public Safety Committee.
Is that a request to refer?
Yes, a request to refer.
Okay. Is there any objection to referring item 41 to Public Safety? Hearing none, it is referred.
And the city attorney has advised that item 48A, it's one of the closed session items, can be continued to May 2nd.
Good for the city attorney. We will continue that to May 2nd. Nothing yet.
Item number, excuse me, items noticed for public hearing, item number two is a street lighting district.
We have no cards.
And there's an amending motion on the file also.
We have no cards on file. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on item two? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed? Yes. Well, there is an amendment, but first we have the public hearing. We have no speakers, so we're closed the public hearing. And we have item 2A on the desk somewhere. Anybody wish to make a comment on item 2A or item two? You have 2A handy? No, all right. I don't either. What is item 2A?
Item 2A is a motion, Wax, Walters, to move that the existing proceedings to abandon the assessment, the ordinance be adopted, and that the Bureau of Street Lighting be instructed to temporarily keep the street lighting operating and initiate new street lighting maintenance assessment proceedings.
Okay. Now, I guess we vote first on item 2A. All right, open the roll on 2A, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
And now on item two as amended. Open the roll, close the roll.
12 ayes.
Tabulate the vote. Thank you. Okay, next item.
Item number three, I believe Councilmember Holden wishes to call that special.
All right, we'll call that special.
Items for which public hearings have been held, items four through 22.
All right, members of the council, are there any specials, items four through 22?
12. Mr. Fuhr would like to call special. He's in the back. 12.
All right, wait, 12. All right, 12, Mr. Fuhr, 22, Mr. Wax.
Okay, Councilmember Chick requests that three be, excuse me, 20 be called special.
Okay, item 20, Mr. Ridley-Thomas?
Eight, 13, and 14.
Eight, 13, and 14. Okay. Are we?
Got them all up there?
All right, now, that doesn't leave us a whole lot to vote on, but the items between three and 22 with the exception of, well, let's try it, four, five, well, we're, these are not the exceptions. We're going to vote on four, five, six, seven, nine, 10, 11, 15 through 19, and 21, except for whatever we continue.
And I need a motion on item 15 that was waived by the committee. There's no committee report submitted.
All right, Mr. Svaric will move. Mr. Wax, seconds. Open the roll now on all of those before something else happens. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item. Doing my best.
Items 23 through 47 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Those need 10 votes to be considered.
Open the roll on consideration of those items. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
All right, now, just let me say to the people who asked to speak on several of the items that for which public hearings had already been held, the, we had cards here on.
Those were all called special, too.
All right, are these all special? Okay, then we're, cool, all right. Now we'll just do them when, when the specials come up. All right, where are we? Next item.
Items 23 through 47.
All right. 23 through 47.
You have cards on item 24.
All right, we'll call that special. Members of the council, any specials?
Item 36 and 40C.
All right, Mrs. Walters calls 36 and 40C. Anybody else? All right, open the roll on the remainder. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Item number three, call special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden. Could you push the speaker button, please?
If we can get a report.
Okay, I won't start the timer, but push the button anyway.
Thank you very much.
All right, can we have staff here for a report on item three? Do we have staff here? There is too much paper.
Just to answer the question, basically, are you acquiring some additional properties? And that, and for what purpose, if any, and why you're acquiring it, and what's the cost going to be, acres and so on?
Good morning. My name is Barbara Martinoff. I represent the Residential Acquisition Bureau. We are acquiring 15 single-family properties and two duplexes, and we're asking for an allocation of $7 million. This is part of an overall program to acquire in response to the neighborhood request to acquire the properties instead of sound attenuation. And basically, the funds are for the acquisition of the properties, closing costs, and relocation to the owners or tenants of those properties. And we're using passenger facility funds, charges rather.
The reason why I raised the question, Madam President, is that, once again, we are in discussion regarding airport expansion, and not once have we been able to have that matter before us for the purpose of finalizing it, and these, which you are aware of. And I just want to raise the issue because eventually, when you acquire all the property, then nobody's going to say, well, we own the property, why can't we expand in the areas where we own the property? And that's the reason why I raised the point, and maybe you can explain.
No, I think it's, I think it's perfectly reasonable to raise the point, but perhaps I can help you out, and I'll stop your time for that.
Oh, go ahead.
The, these particular acquisitions were done at the request of the people who own the residential property, and they were done because they're not exactly in the path of the proposed airport expansion, but they get the noise, and they are surrounded by non-residential uses. And it was their hope, when they came to me and asked if And it was their hope, when they came to me and asked if I could get the airport to buy their property, that they would be able to get money and relocation help, so that they would be able to find quieter places to live, well in advance of the property values being called into serious question by the, the potential for the expansion. The things that have created a non-residential quality of life in that area are things that have gone on for years that are mostly indirectly related to the airport, they're not actually the airport's activities. So, it was a new one, as I tell you each time, it was a new one in my experience to have people come to me and say, "Please, we want to be bought out," but they certainly did do that. So, we've asked the airport to look at the hardship cases, the cases where people really need to get their, their financial situation as such that they need to have this taken care of quickly, and this is the third batch of those hardship cases.
Right, I raise the point because right now, you're gonna see where this becomes a policy, and as we, as more people learn about it, and they determine they're from the certain center, the centrics of the airport where the noise is highly generated, and sort of dissipates as it gets to their place of residence, you'll find that they're, they're all gonna come forward.
Don't worry, Nate, I'm on it. And I welcome your help.
They'll come forward and say, "Buy my property," and at what point do we run out of money, and at what point do we stop? So, I think that's something that you're gonna.
Well, it seems the airport never runs out of money, but we'll find out. All right, thank you. Mrs. Walters.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I recall, when the airport first began their expansion, the houses that were facing the ocean along, in Westchester Playa del Rey there, were offered to nonprofit agencies to be moved to lots in inner-city and rehabbed and made available to people for purchase or for rent. And I'm wondering if the airport has thought of doing that again with any houses that you may have, that are in good condition, that could be removed. The other houses were in exceptionally good condition.
Most of these homes, the single-family in particular, were built over fifty years old, so many of them contain asbestos and lead-based paint, so, so we have an issue of having to mitigate them. We are working with the.
Well, you have to mitigate them in that case before you demolish them.
Right, we would have to only do a certain amount of mitigation for asbestos. We are working with the Housing Department to see which of their nonprofits would be interested in working to move the houses off-site, and we're trying to work out the logistics of all of that.
Good.
And then, any nonprofits that contact us would either be working with that department or they would be working with us in the future.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? In that case, the matter is before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved, forthwith on that one, please. Next item.
Item number eight, call special by Councilmember Ridley Thomas.
Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Help yourself, Mr. Ridley Thomas. Madam President, members of the council.
Could you hit the speaker button, please?
Oh, thank you. All together? Thank you. Madam President, members of the council, this is a project, an economic development project, that by all standards deserves support, and I want to lend my support to it. I do wish to make the point, however, in this regard, that it has adverse impacts on the residents that are just across the way, and it seems to me toward that end that the Department of Transportation should do that which is necessary to mitigate that by the installation of at least one traffic signal. That would round out all of the issues that need to be addressed, and, Madam President, should it be in order, I would simply so moved to have the Department of Transportation proceed with that installation, and this project can, should, go forward, and I would just simply ask for a second of that motion.
Do I hear a second? I hear a second. I didn't hear a did it, but I heard one. Ah, Ms. Mizakowski seconded. All right, the motion is, the item eight, as amended, is before us. Open the roll, close, oh, Mr. Holden wishes to be heard.
Yes, and cards on that, I think.
Um.
Target.
Mr. Holden. All right, we have one, two, three, four, five cards. We'll, a ten-minute, six, six. Anybody else? All right, we have six cards. Let's try for a ten-minute public hearing and see how we do. So, we'll hear first, I'm just calling these in the order they came in. Kathy Winteringham, to be followed by Percy Akins. Now, a number of these people are from the same organization. Then Ruth Mansfield, Victor Namiyas, then we change. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Kathy Winteringham. I'm the president of the Homeowners Association at Cameo Woods, which is adjacent, maybe half a block here from the proposed area, although we were right across. The original proposal was to actually rezone right down to our property line, but that has been amended, and I want to thank you for allowing me to speak today. First of all, I just want to tell you that Cameo Woods is a, is a community of three-hundred-and-eighty-four homes, condominium homes, that was built with money from the Community Development Agency based on your vote many years ago. You gave us $4 million, and we, we were fortunate enough to have those homes built. I'm asking today that you continue the item until the community has had sufficient time to examine the impacts, that primary impact being this traffic light, in that we can't get in and out of our driveway. And as of December 16th, we knew nothing about this except a letter in the mail, and when we went to the public hearing to 7/17th, there was very little information available about this. And we expected that the public testimony would then be closed ten days after that December 17th hearing, however, it wasn't. Nate Holden's office asked that it be left open until sometime in January, and the bottom line is, is March 1st was the first time that I ever received any kind of a document from the city of Los Angeles telling me what this was about. I then attended the planning commission hearing on March 9th, at which there was no public testimony taken, even though we asked to be heard before the, the vote was taken. So, essentially, the community has not been heard on this since the thing has been, gone through. Until last night, last night through Congressman, through Councilman Ridley Thomas's office, we had someone from the planning office and someone from the mayor's office come, speak to our community, and explain to us what this was about. From that, we now come up with three concerns. One is the height of these buildings. These buildings are two-hundred-and-thirty-some-odd-feet-high. They will be the highest buildings between the airport and Wilshire Boulevard. An icon is what the developer is looking for, however, this will be what we look at, and this will also be, we will be what the people in those buildings look down at. The, and the, there were pictures that were given to us, however, they were given to us, aerial photographs were given to us. I think that when you look at two-hundred-and-thirty-feet-high buildings from the ground up, they look very different from the air down. That's a concern. Traffic was a concern, eight thousand additional car trips in our area that is already gridlocked with traffic from Los Encino all the way down into Culver City. And the third one is, is we have terrible sewer problems in that, in that area that is not a surprise to anyone. We are sitting right at the main thoroughfare for both Norris and for the old sewer, and now we've got this new sewer project coming right past us. So, we got more flushes coming up the street, and essentially, we don't have appropriate sewer to, to handle it. So, we really want more time to look at this. Thank you.
Thank you. There are the three more of you from the same association, Mr. Akins, and could I ask you please not to repeat, so that we can hear from the other people as well?
Just a second. She doesn't want you to repeat what I said. Hang on, can you just move over a second?
Okay.
I'm not sure he could hear what I said, he's really hearing impaired, so.
Okay, go ahead, just tell him to go ahead.
I have some charts and diagrams, if you care to see them. I made enough for each councilman. We have three things that we're concerned with. They're, they're all traffic, they could be solved by putting in a traffic light. If, if you would turn to the pages, the first is there are gonna be eight-hundred-and-forty-four cars parked there. The second is, they're going to relocate the lights at Jefferson and Rodeo Road. The third is they're going to restrict the traffic coming out of Carbit, so they could only one come one, one way. The fourth thing is that the traffic coming from Jefferson going north can bypass a traffic signal and come directly into Cameo Woods. So, our problem is, not the project, it's the traffic import that's gonna put on us. We are the only condominium in Baldwin Hills that have no traffic light, we have no protection whatsoever. So, this is what we're, complaint is about. We're not complaining on their project, we're complaining on the traffic impact. We were left out of the equations when they made the blueprints for us, so I thank you very kindly.
Thank you, sir. The next, let me read off everybody else we have here. Now, I, I hope that you did hear that Mr. Ridley Thomas, in moving approval of this, moved the addition of a traffic light, and I believe it's the same traffic light. And, and that's been seconded, and we were just about to vote on moving it with the traffic light. We still have four people who wish to be heard, and if you wish to be heard, you certainly may, but I would ask you, if you could, to be brief and not repeat, and keep in mind that we are including a traffic light. Ruth Mansfield is next, followed by Victor Namiyas, then Frederick Smith, and Michael Banner.
Yes, my name is Ruth Mansfield, I'm a homeowner at Cameo Woods. I just have one request, that you do not go ahead with this project at this time, since the traffic is a problem, a situation that has to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Namiyas.
Thank you, Ruth. Good morning, councilmembers. Thank you very much for taking the time to give us the chance to appear before you and speak today. We are very happy now to hear that the issue of the traffic light has been resolved. We do ask, though, that some further consideration be given to the height of the project, for the reasons that Kathy Winteringham, our president, spoke about, primarily that it will be the tallest building between the airport and Wilshire Boulevard, that it is in an area of one and two-story buildings, and this, this building will be ten to twelve times the height of any of the surrounding properties, and that there may be other options available to the developer to meet his gross square footages that he desires within the existing, existing land. I'm not gonna make any mention now of the traffic, since that's been put to bed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Frederick Smith. And then, Michael Banner.
I don't think I need to speak.
I can't, it's hard to see around this pillar.
Michael Banner, Los Angeles Local Development Corporation, and I'll defer my comments to the wisdom of the council.
Okay, thank you. All right, that closes the public hearing. Mr. Wax wishes to be heard.
I was gonna speak after the, does the councilmember of the district wanna speak first?
Mr. Holden would like to.
Let me allow Mr. Holden to speak first.
Okay, Mr. Holden, go for it.
Mr. Thomas has already introduced the motion, which responds to what the constituents concerned about. I might add, however, that I want to compliment them for raising the issue and getting it resolved. But I want to mention one other factor here, as relates to poor planning. The Cameo housing project that was done, and I know when that was underway, approved by CRA, and Fedco was there, now, if you all know how busy Fedco was, they should've included at, at that time, a traffic signal there as a part of that whole project. The city's responsibility was to do that, and they did not. Since then, of course, Fedco has faded away into the sunset, and now, we've approved a target program, project there. Target is gonna be even more busy than the Fedco, and you know we need a traffic signal. That was not required at the time to mitigate the traffic study. The Department of Transportation, for the benefit of the people who are here, have stated that this project is fifteen-hundred-feet-away from the housing project, which is a thousand-feet in excess of what's required to be notified by mail. It's only five-hundred-feet, but this is fifteen-hundred-feet-away. The area where mitigation is absolutely necessary is between Culver City and Los Angeles, and the City Council of Culver City has approved the mitigation program already, and so our action today would ratify that essentially. So, your, your concerns have been met, the impact of the traffic would be northwest of where you are primarily as it relates to this project, that's where it's located. The target development will, in my view, impact your, your residents, and it should be addressed. We wanted to thank Mr. Thomas for making the motion, and you'll find that even though Target will go in there, your traffic signal will, will be installed as you requested because it is necessary, and I support the amendment.
Just so I'm clear, Mr. Holden, are you also supporting going ahead today?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Wax.
No, Madam President, I was really rising to support the addition of the traffic signal, and since Mr. Holden and Mr. Ridley Thomas have addressed that, I don't, I, I just think that the, I think the homeowners have been remarkably reasonable in, in only requesting a traffic signal among the other mitigation measures. This is a large project, but since every, if everyone appears to be happy, I wanted to support the, the, the addition of the signal. It's a very small price to pay for a project of this magnitude.
Thank you. I'd just like to say that since Cameo Woods used to be my constituents, they are a very reasonable bunch of people, and they were one of the first condominium associations to put recycling in without waiting for anybody else. However, I just want to make sure that we're all clear on this, I did hear Mr. Namiyas express some other concerns, but Mr. Holden has recommended going ahead with the amendment, and I think that's where we are. Mr. Ridley Thomas, you wanna speak again? Go.
I just simply want to say that the economic development that will come forward as a result of this project and the target to which Mr. Holden made reference, is going to be very, very significant for that intersection, and it spells progress, in my view. It is also to be said that there is a price to pay with economic development, and these residents, these constituents know that, they are prepared to celebrate that progress and simply appeal for this mitigation, so I think this is a win-win for all involved, and I am thankful that we can arrive at this point, and congratulations to all parties who are prepared to make this go in a favorable way.
Well, I hope we've arrived at it. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved, as amended.
Forthwith.
Forthwith, please. All right, next item.
Item, item number twelve, call special by Councilmember Fuer.
All right, and we also have a number of people who want to be heard. Did you wanna speak first? No, or you want? All right. This is item twelve, we are gonna open the public hearing, and we'll start again by assuming a ten-minute public hearing, if you'll set the clock there. We'll begin with Anita Zussman, followed by Carol Schatz, Victor Virek, and Ty Glenn.
Thank you, Madam President, and members of the city council. I'm Anita Zussman, Vice President of Legislative Affairs at the Los Angeles. I'm Anita Zussman, Vice President of Legislative Affairs at the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce. I'm here today to express on behalf of the chamber our concern over item number two in this motion. The item instructs the Housing Department, with the assistance of the CAO and the CLA, to provide a report in two weeks concerning the adoption of a linkage fee for commercial development to fund a housing trust fund. The task force report where this recommendation is contained estimates that the adoption of a linkage fee would cost developers $10 million to $18 million a year. While the chamber is cognizant of the need to provide additional housing in Los Angeles, this proposal imposes a significant burden on the private sector and the development community. Two weeks, we would suggest, is not nearly enough time to study and comment on the impact of imposing a linkage fee. We ask that you provide more time for study. We ask that you refer this whole motion to committee where it can be appropriately addressed. Moreover, we're concerned that in the motion only one or two types of taxes are singled out to fund the housing trust fund without taking into account and studying the impact of the other dozen ways to fund the housing trust fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Schatz.
Carol Schatz, President of Central City Association. We too have a concern, just expressed by the Chamber of Commerce as well, about the quickness with which the council is being asked to report back on the housing linkage fee. Now, I understand from talking to Councilmember Fuhr that the idea is to simply have a report that gets generated, and that we're not going to have a report that comes back necessarily in two weeks. If that's the case, we're comfortable with that. But in two weeks, the impacts of these fees simply cannot be studied. You can't have the partners at the table that we need to be in order to make sure that all the voices are heard about this and to really understand the impacts of imposing a fee that singles out one particular part of the industry. We are asking, therefore, that you give a sufficient time to have us be partners in the process, to find solutions with you for the problem, but at the table, noting that the task force was very broad in its composition, but had few commercial developers present. Banks, as you know, do not pay the fee and provide affordable housing financing. For downtown Los Angeles, one of the impacts we would hope you would look at is the fact that we are trying to encourage the adaptive reuse of older buildings to housing. It is already a very costly process to do this, and if we impose fees along with the school board proposed increasing, doubling of the increase for residential development, we are talking about a series of fees, taxes, really, that make it very difficult for us to continue this effort. And we would therefore ask that we be partners and help join with you in finding other solutions and take the requisite amount of time to really study the impacts and make sure that the solutions that are proposed are fair, equitable, and fall upon a broader selection of folks than just the development community. Thank you very much.
Mr. Virek.
Morning, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I was a member of the task force, and there's nobody on the task force who is more eager than I was and am to improve the situation of the tenants and to be able to have an end to the crisis in housing. If you look in your, in short supply, this is the report from the task force. Back on pages 98 and 99 is the appendix. That's the minority report, which I wrote. Many times landlords are vilified, but there's nobody whose future is more entwined with the welfare of the tenants than is the landlord. There are many people who were involved in the task force who, if the tenants are in despair and have a tough time, they continue to work. They do not continue to work if everything's solved for the tenants. It's only the tenants and landlords who work together who will be able to improve the situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Glenn.
Good afternoon. I'm Ty Glenn, attorney with Legal Aid Foundation of Los Angeles Housing Improvement Project. And I'm here on behalf of the thousands of low-income people living in slum conditions in this city, right here. Why? Because they can't afford anything else. That's all that's available. This is a crisis. It's a crisis right now. I'm here to ask that the City Council create and fund this housing trust fund so they can address that crisis. The city recently took a giant step towards correcting slum conditions in this city. They created the systematic code enforcement program, and that's going to be a big step. But next, we have to have the money to correct these conditions, the money to save what affordable housing is available right now, and the money to create more affordable housing. It can be done. It takes money. I myself represented an affordable housing project about to go to market rate. The tenants were able to successfully purchase that project and keep it affordable. That took money, plenty of it, and time, and that was 14 units. Just last week, I walked through three buildings, making up 18 units, where I was actually afraid to be there, afraid of being hurt, and afraid for the children that lived in those projects. I saw a basement flooded, coming up the steps with water, and the bug infestation and vermin infestation that resulted from that. I saw children playing in a yard where the hot water heaters were spewing carbon monoxide into their play area. I saw an elderly woman, partially blind, living in a unit where she was avoiding certain parts of the floor because it would probably collapse if she put her full weight on it. And I saw a family of four living in one small room. Money is what will fix this situation, because these people are living like this because it's all they can afford. We need money to be able to fix these conditions, to assist receivers, nonprofits, tenants to take over and rehabilitate these buildings, to create new affordable housing so these people will have an affordable, decent choice. I have worked with low-income tenants in this city for more than 10 years, and every year, it seems, that more people are living in worse conditions. This is a crisis of huge proportions. Please create this trust fund and do something about it.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing, and we have a number of council members who wish to be heard. Before I call on them, can we do items 21, 42, and 43 forthwith, please? And now we will start with Mr. Pacheco.
Thank you, Madam President, and colleagues. As the Chair of the Housing Committee of Development Committee, I want to give an update on item 12. First of all, the labeling of item 12 in terms of creating a housing trust fund in CDs 5, 12, 13, and 14 is a mistake. This is a citywide project. This is not limited to those council districts. I think just by the fact that the council members of those areas made the motion, that mistake was made. But let's make it very clear, this is for everyone involved in this city. And in terms of reading the report, there's two things I wanted to point out. It's very clear from the report that we are making a strong commitment, and when I say we, I'm talking about the committee. I personally made a commitment to the housing advocates in September of last year. Councilmember Fuhr, Councilmember Goldberg have been strong advocates on this housing trust fund. So the committee and the makers of the motion are very committed to the housing trust fund. What we identified and what the motion identifies is that within 30 days, we identify the steps necessary to create a housing crisis trust fund, and that the CLA, the CAO and the Housing Department also review the action items regarding dedicated sources. In committee, instead of reporting back in 30 days on that process, Councilmember Goldberg identified two recommendations, the linkage fee and the transient occupancy tax to be reported back within two weeks. It doesn't mean that that study is going to be done within two weeks. It means, instead of waiting 30 days for the Housing Department, the CLA, and CAO to identify the steps necessary or to make recommendations on how to work with these dedicated sources in 30 days, we want to just give those a little bit of a bump and get those back to us in two weeks. So it's the beginning process. These are many steps in an area that we feel very strong about in terms of having the housing trust fund here in the city of Los Angeles. And we did assure the representatives from CCA and the commercial developers that we would include them as stakeholders in this process. I've spoken to Mr. Deanen from the CLA's office. He assures me that all stakeholders involved in housing and how this would impact the rest of the city, stakeholders would be involved and be a part of the process. So I do urge and recommend support of item number 12 today to establish a housing trust fund. But I want to give some clarity on exactly where we're going on this issue. As we know, it's a very important issue for all of our friends in the housing advocate community, so I do urge your support.
Mr. Fuhr.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I really appreciated the comments of our Housing Committee Chair, Mr. Pacheco, and I think that they go a long way toward cutting through what otherwise could have been a contentious discussion this morning. It need not be. You know, this has been labeled by many folks "the year of the child," but the fact is that for most of the, that most of the housing crisis relates to kids. You know, 1 in 7 of our residents in the city lives in overcrowded conditions. When we opened up the Section 8 subsidy process a couple of years ago, 10% of our city's households applied, and it's a 10-year waiting list. The statistics are horrible. You know, we talk about people on minimum wage. It takes somebody on minimum wage 100 hours of work to afford a two-bedroom apartment, 100 hours a week, and that apartment would cost $766, but the average rent for a two-bedroom apartment in large units is twice that much, it's $1,346. It's completely out of reach, and it affects people at every edge of our economic spectrum, from the poorest of our residents to the most wealthy. And as many of us have been saying for a long time, this has a huge impact on our economic recovery, which is why it's critical for us to have teamwork among representatives of the business community and tenant advocates and city officials and others. It's very important to do that. I support the action that emerged from committee, but I want to amend it to a minor degree. I would like to amend it to also include, within that two-week reporting period, a report on what we would need to do to further advance inclusionary zoning and an INLU fee, just so we know what our choices are. And I hope there's a second for that. Thank you. I recognize that when these reports come in, they merely begin a process, because the reports will tell us what we need to do, what the roadmap is, for pursuing these goals to create a sustainable source of revenue for a housing trust fund. We can choose to pursue them further when reports come back or not. The further pursuit's going to involve more studies, a NEXUS study, among other things. So to the business community representatives who are here today, we should be working together. The business community has a huge stake in the outcome of this debate. If we continue to allow this crisis to persist, our economy will stultify. It does nobody any good. Most of the kids, maybe up to, most of the people, maybe up to a million people in our city live in slum housing conditions, most of those people are kids. We're going to allow that to persist? It's not just an economic issue, it's a moral issue. So let's get to it. And Mr. Pacheco has it right. Let's pursue getting the reports in two weeks pursuant to Ms. Goldberg's motion in committee. Let's add to that a look at what it would take to do inclusionary zoning and an INLU fee, and let's do these things in time so that if we want to fund studies of how to pursue these goals, we can do so within the budget process. Otherwise, we won't have that opportunity, and we'll miss a year. And we can't afford to miss a year when we're confronting a crisis.
Thank you, Mr. Fuhr. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Ms. Sikowski.
I just wanted to add that it seems to me it was about in the late 1980s, when in fact, the council had instructed the city attorney, the CLA, the CAO to prepare this housing linkage fee. But before we did that, we were required to do the NEXUS study. So I would just like to amend this motion to ask that the CLA, in bringing back a report on what can be done, how it could be done, that they bring back an update on the NEXUS study that had been committed, had been, I believe, begun. I don't know that it was ever completed. But to bring that information back as part of this, so that we know where it was in the late 80s, what needs to be added to it now. But I think we had done some work, let's not reinvent the wheel, and look at the work that was done as we bring this forward and looking at all the other options.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Goldberg.
Point of information, Mr. President, just a second. Mr. Wax, the other Harvard Law grad wishes to speak with Mr. Fuhr about this term of inclusionary zoning. When you get a moment, it might be useful to spread around what the actual meaning of that is.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Goldberg.
Yes, I'm not going to repeat all of the things I've said which cover most of my points. I just want to just reassure everybody that our goal is to be in position to try to do something this year, but we understand that the solution, whether it's the housing trust fund or whatever else it will be, will take a lot longer than this. The big gains that we've made, for example, in my district in Hollywood in housing, came from the apartment owners and the tenants working together, not against each other. When we have people working against each other, you spend all your time fighting each other. So, but if we don't move quickly on pieces of this to get started, we're not going to have anything in the current year. And what we want to do is to begin to get started, if we can, even in a very small way. Maybe just get the trust fund established, maybe identify several possible sources of funding for it, maybe identify a small amount to get it going. But we are a ways away from a permanent understanding of how to have a trust fund that will produce the kind of revenues and where that, those revenues should come from, changing existing sources into it, adding new sources. There are no decisions on any of that yet, nor are there going to be in two weeks or even in a month. But if we don't take some steps quickly, nothing will happen now, and if nothing happens now, our next opportunity will be literally a year from now. And at that point, the situation will have deteriorated that much further, and we're trying to find some ways to do that, which is why we have some things we've asked for in two weeks, some things we've asked for in a month, and other things which will take six months, maybe even a year. So this is a process, but it's a process that must begin now. I'm not going to repeat all the reasons that my colleagues have said, but I share all of them. We have no choice, in my view, but to get started now.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Walters.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to add my voice to those who have brought this motion forward. I think as they have indicated that it is critical that we pass this, it is crucial that we address the problem of affordable housing by all members of this community. There's got to be housing to accommodate all of the people of the city, or we're going to see more people having to live on the streets. And already, there are too many who cannot afford decent housing and who, if they aren't living on the street, are living in very cramped quarters with multiple families sharing spaces far too small. Councilmembers, the mayor's budget this year does not reflect any money for housing. The mayor abandoned housing some years ago when he instituted the LONI, promised to give neighborhoods, or the neighborhood program, not the LONI, that would give each neighborhood, targeted neighborhood initiative, yes, the TNI, where he promised to make a million dollars available for three years to each community. And that has had a rocky implementation. That was money that had previously gone to housing, and the mayor's office blithely stated, "Well, you can put it into housing if you want." When the Staples Arena came along, there was $4 million that the CRA had promised for housing, the last $4 million that they had promised for housing, and it went into the money that they set aside for the arena. I think that we are not living up to our responsibilities as caretakers of this city if we just go along and ignore the needs for housing. And we need more efforts in this regard, not fewer. And we need more efforts in this regard, not fewer. So I certainly, with pleasure, support this motion for an Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Before I call on the next speaker, I would like to remind councilmembers that we are down to a bare quorum. There are only 10 members present, and so if we could please hold the quorum, I would appreciate it. Chair recognizes Councilman Wax.
I'm glad Mr. Fuhr made some of the comments that he did. I mean, the need for this is self-evident, but what the solutions are are not so self-evident. And I think it's important that this be understood, that these are reports we're asking for, not final decisions. And the partnerships that have to be developed and finally come to conclusion have to be greater than just the council and the Central City Association. You know, the fact of the matter is, the Central City Association, it's their job, their lobbyist, to be here. When you start talking about inclusionary zoning and all, you have a lot of other people in the city that have an equal concern. You have the neighborhoods and the communities in which this zoning will take place, and they should be a part of the solution as well. These decisions are too important to leave to just a few people who make decisions in City Hall and have access to it. These are broader decisions, and we're never going to begin to solve this problem unless we really involve people in solving it. And so the partnership, yes, it should include the CCA, but it's got to be much broader than that when you're talking about the impacts of paying for the program on a lot of people. And it's much better to buy into the program and have it be a collaborative one than one that's just imposed on people whether they like it or not. So I hope that as we go along in this process and recognize that we do need to be inclusive in making the decisions, that that inclusion be more than just a few lobbyists who are able to come here, like the CCA, and tell us that they want to be involved in it too. Yes, they should be involved, but there are a whole lot of other people that should be involved in it as well. And if they're not able to be here telling us that, we should be out seeking them in coming to the eventual decisions. These reports are necessary. I welcome them. I think that we want as much information as possible. We should explore all the possibilities, but we should not exclude all of the people who are affected by this in coming to a final decision. So I just raise that now because I felt that this partnership has to be much more than the limited one that it usually is around here.
Thank you, Mr. Wax. The Chair recognizes Councilman Ridley Thomas. Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Burnson would like to speak, and then I'll recognize you. Chair recognizes Mr. Burnson.
Yeah, I -- Mr. President, members of the council, I was a co-signer in this motion because I too recognize the critical situation that we have. You know, there's a lot of things that we could have been doing and we haven't been doing that we need to start looking at. One of the big problems that we have with the downtown community is the fact that we don't have a residential community downtown, like other cities do. You know, if you go to Manhattan, or you go to Chicago, any of the cities where you're -- excuse me, please, okay? If you go to those cities, you find out where you have a vibrant downtown, you also have a residential community. Many, many years ago, before I was on this council, I served on the advisory committee, the Blue Ribbon Committee for the Downtown Redevelopment District. And one of the recommendations that I made at that time was that we take the upper stories, which were vacant in the downtown area, and turn them into residential. Well, lo and behold, 20-some years later, 25 years later, they're looking at that. We could have preserved, we could have had housing downtown, we could have had a more vibrant downtown area. We need to do things to encourage people to build housing in this city. And what we're asking for is suggestions. You know, tacking these fees on may not be the most conducive thing. Actually, I brought in two motions several months ago that asked for us to sponsor legislation that would give for the federal government and the state to give tax credits on amortization reduction periods to people who build housing, affordable housing in our city. I don't know what's going on, if we push this program, but we cannot do this alone. We need the cooperation. We need to provide incentives for people to do what has to be done. And, you know, I'm willing to look at this thing, and that's why I signed it, but I'm not in cement about adding fees on. That may have a negative effect rather than a positive effect. Meanwhile, our 20 percent of our CRA funds, and we still have CRA projects around the city, in spite of the fact that the downtown area is capped out, and that 20 percent should be used in the areas that are appropriate. They don't need to be used within the boundaries of where the money's collected. So we need to look at more ways that we can encourage this creation of housing. And I think that moving forward and asking for the recommendations, looking at the potentials is the right step. It's not the final step.
Thank you, Mr. Burnson. Mr. Ridley Thomas, I believe, is going to move the previous question, and without objection, that will be the order. Mr. Pacheco, as the Chair of the Committee, I do have a note here on the agenda that we would like to possibly move forward with instruction number one and refer item two back to committee, or was it your pleasure to move both items forward today and then ask for reports back?
It was to move everything forward today, and the report backs would report back to committee.
Very good, okay. Mr. Pacheco makes that motion. Councilwoman Goldberg seconds. Madam Clerk, open the roll on --
As amended.
Open the roll on item number 12 as amended. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That item is approved, forthwith. Okay? Next item, Madam Clerk.
Item 13, called special by Councilmember Ridley Thomas.
Councilman Ridley Thomas. We do have two speakers' cards on this item. I have one card for the proposal and one card against the proposal.
I'll move a three-minute hearing.
Councilwoman Goldberg moves a three-minute public hearing on item number 13, and without objection, that will be the order. Let us first have the person who has listed against proposal, Mr. Peter Sykes. Mr. Sykes, followed by Joseph Avila, who is for the proposal. Mr. Sykes, you have a minute and a half, sir.
Okay. We -- I own the Hollywood spas, it's been on -- thank you. The Hollywood spas is in favor of the project, but unfortunately, we've been trying to negotiate with the developer for about the last year and a half. We have an agreement with the Department of Transportation for 25 years on a parking lot that surrounds the Doolittle Theater. Now that the project is no longer inclusive of the Doolittle Theater, we're at risk because there's no EIR report, no impact report done. They show what the parking ramifications would be if they proceed forward on the project as it's described now. So they've really circumvented the EIR, what they've done. Secondly, they have claimed that they have made an agreement with us, and that for me to be up here today talking about it is a waste of time because we have an agreement. But we don't have an agreement, and we're awaiting an agreement. And if we don't have an agreement, we have to proceed forward, and it would be the second lawsuit on this project, the stoppage for being built. So the CRA, you here in City Council, and our business community would like to work together to resolve the problem. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Joseph Avila, Mr. Avila.
Good morning. I'm the General Counsel for the Ricardo Montalvan Nosotros Foundation, and I'm here on his behalf. Mr. Montalvan unfortunately could not make it because of medical treatments. We're here to support the item number 13 and would like the council to recommend approval. The foundation was originally considered as the tenant for the project in December of 1999, and due to the changes, it no longer is a part of the project. But we intend to move forward, and we have been negotiating with CRA in good faith. They have been very receptive and helpful in the process. We'd like to especially thank Councilwoman Jackie Goldberg for her help, and also Councilman Nick Pacheco. And we therefore urge support for and approval of item number 13. Thank you.
This is an issue in Council District 13. Councilwoman Goldberg, as Councilmember of the district, do you move approval on this item?
I just want to say that we're very pleased that even though the project has changed somewhat and evolved, now it is a mixed-use project altogether, including the Doolittle, that it does mean that we're going to have a Nosotros Theater at this location. The project does not involve a single dollar of general fund money, and it is really a good project, and I'm really thrilled that Nosotros is going to be at Hollywood and Vine, where, in my opinion, it belongs, and that this is a project that I think that we'll all be very proud of. And I move the report.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The Chair recognizes Councilman Wax.
I think this is an exciting project. Could I ask, though, if someone could respond to Mr. Sykes's concerns?
Oh, well, I can. You know, Mr. Sykes unfortunately is under the mistaken impression, in my humble opinion, that there -- that his parking needs are not being taken care of. We have spent enormous amount of time on them and will continue to do so. But this project has very many fewer parking spaces because it has very few retail -- it's only first-floor retail anymore. And the housing is going to be covered. We have a deal with him with the Doolittle lot that's owned by DOT now, that does not change. He is not losing a single space. Plus, we have plans in Hollywood for additional parking in that area, which will more than take care of his needs. And unfortunately, I have not been able to persuade him that he's not lost a single space under this deal, and in fact, will be gaining some in the very near future in the additional parking that we're planning.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Seeing no further colleagues that wish to speak, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on this item and tabulate the vote?
11 ayes.
Forthwith.
That item is approved, forthwith on that item. Next item.
Item 14, called special by Councilmember Ridley Thomas.
Mr. Ridley Thomas, item number 14. Mr. Ridley Thomas passes.
Are there cards in opposition?
Yes, Councilwoman, we do have one card in opposition, and we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 in support.
I would just hear the card in opposition, then. I would move a three-minute hearing.
Okay, for the record, we will list all of those persons who have submitted cards and support as part of the record supporting this. And the one card that we have against the proposal is Mr. John Walsh. Mr. Walsh?
Would Ms. Goldberg like to reconsider? I'm surprised that Joel Wax, $2 million of CRA funds on another theater. Remember the millions you lost on Los Angeles Theater Project, Los Angeles Theater Center? Millions of dollars. We have a housing crisis. We're going to spend $2 million to buy this from UCLA. This is the way -- and where's -- that's not general fund money? Wait a second. The CRA scoops general fund money off the top and diverts it into their budget, and it's spent. It's general fund money. Don't get involved in the questions of semantics. This is money. LA, the taxpayer is not interested in theater. The taxpayer is interested in, let's have some good police, let's have the streets cleaned. But Jackie is hooked in, and she's run, and she's made deals, and she's got campaign contributions. And let's come down to the deal. This was supposed to be, what was it supposed to be, the marketplace? Marketplace. It was supposed to be commercial. But when they looked at the ridership figures on the subway, when they had promised 268,000, 60,000, and they produced 600,000 weekday boardings, they realized that there were 200,000 below their projection, MTA's projection. No one wants to build commercial at Sunset and Vine now. They realized that they were lied to by the MTA, they were lied to. The ridership is too low to support another marketplace. So what is it going to be now? It's going to be housing, 350 units of housing in an area not suited for housing. Now, if I had eight, it's going to be, I'll say this, is this going to be luxury housing? I tell you, if I had $2,000 a month to spend on housing, I sure as heck would not live at Sunset and Vine. I'd live in the Valley, I'd live in Long Beach, I'd live in Santa Monica, I'd live anyplace but Hollywood. And I will give you $100 for every person that you can convince to move into my hellhole where I pay 500 and to pay 2,000 to get lousy services, lousy police, and lousy across the board at Sunset and Vine. This is what we're going to have here. Thanks, Jackie. See you on the corner.
Well, if she wants to speak to --
Excuse me.
Ma'am.
My card was not listed as either in -- my name's Kate Nelson, I'm the owner of The Palace. And I was not listed either in support or opposition. I do have a concern that I would like to --
Go right ahead, ma'am.
Fine, she has a concern, that's fine.
Thank you. Being from The Palace and being in what used to be the star of Southern California, the Theater District of Los Angeles, I have concerns about the community putting residential areas right into the midst of our very now booming economy right there as we are developing in Hollywood and Vine. The Pantages has now got The Lion King for two years, The Palace is extremely busy, we are extremely noisy, as will be the Doolittle. And we are thrilled that the subway is there so that it can help the ridership. But we are concerned about bringing residents into an area that is so completely commercial. And I want to make sure that when we do that, that we don't end up moving pigs, people next to the pig farm, where suddenly they think it's really bucolic and we don't want to be there now anymore. You guys have to shut down, you guys have to restrict your hours, you guys have to make sure that you don't go over, you know, 20 decibels, you know, six feet from your front door. We are concerned as the people who are trying to bring that end of Hollywood Boulevard, that end of Hollywood back, that we don't import people who will -- well, I'm hoping -- I wanted to express the concern. We want to make sure that the council's behind the commercial people who have been there all along and trying to make a go of it. We do support residents there. We just don't want them coming in and trying to shut us down as we're finally, finally making it on an economic basis.
Thank you, ma'am. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Goldberg.
Yes, we share your concern. Before we agreed to do the mixed use, I did go and spend some time in Santa Monica at Third Street Promenade, which has housing above a lot of the clubs and a lot of the restaurants, and actually talked with them. And what they assured me of was, the only people who move into housing like that are people who are interested in that lifestyle, want to be involved in a happening urban place. Otherwise, they don't choose to move there.
That would be thrilling.
And I asked them whether they had a high turnover, they told me no. Whether they had a lot of complaints, they told me they had really relatively none, because the people know when they come in. It's not like it was brought in after they were there. They know when they come in where they're moving, and they're generally, he said, younger, not young, because the rates are high there too, but younger, and are interested in participating in the street life, and that's why they choose to move there. And I believe that will be the case here as well.
Thank you.
Colleagues, this is a changed program. It involves a $3.3 million gap loan from CRA. It is a loan, it will be fully repaid with interest in, through site-specific tax increment. If it is not repaid, since the loan is from the developer, the developer is the loser, not the taxpayers. And I believe that it is an important step in continuing the projects that we are to now have a mixed-use housing and retail next to the Doolittle with good parking and with other projects nearby, including Cinerama Dome and others that are being done by the CIM group. We're beginning to see, I think, a critical mass being achieved in Hollywood, and we would appreciate your support, and I will move the report.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Is there any other colleague that would like to speak on item number 14? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on this item and tabulate the vote?
10 ayes.
That item is approved, forthwith. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Item 20, called special by Councilmember Chick.
Councilwoman Chick, item number 20.
Thank you, Mr. President and Chair of our Transportation Committee. I want to thank you, Mr. Zivornich, for passing this out of your committee so expediently. Colleagues, what we have before us today, and I have submitted an amendment to bring certain parts of this back to Transportation Committee. What is before us, colleagues, is hopeful. Our Department of Transportation has become a key player, along with the MTA and Caltrans, in coming up with a list of short-term improvements to the 101 freeway corridor, the incredible congestion that is causing so many problems to so many commuters. What I'm asking to go back to committee is a report from the Department of Transportation What I'm asking to go back to committee is a report from the Department of Transportation, who will be working with Caltrans, to see if, in fact, there's federal dollars available to fund some of the studies that are needed, and also to prepare for the call for projects with MTA. We're very hopeful to get funding for some of these key proposals, things such as increasing the number of park-and-ride lots so that people actually start having ease of taking public transportation and a way to get to it, furthering traffic signal synchronization and adding lanes to freeway entrances and exits. Finally, my office convened a working group with the elected officials from all levels of government that are concerned with this problem, Congressman Sherman's office, Assembly Member Kewell, County Supervisor Yaroslavsky, Councilmember Miss Sikowski, and Fuhr. And what we've got going is some very focused teamwork to try and initiate some of these projects that will bring some relief in the short term rather than only waiting for the longer term. So I look forward to continuing to work with the Transportation Committee and seeing these things move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and your leadership is to be commended on this issue also. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Wax.
I just really wanted to support Ms. Chick and commend her. There have to be some priorities somewheres along the way, and people have to see that something can get done. The 405 and the 101 and the 405 and the 10, those two, if, if this city could fix those two interchanges, I mean, I thought that the study recently took place as to what the economic cost of not doing this is, and it's extraordinary. And if we start thinking more in those terms, start realizing that the sense of urgency, that it's not only a matter of convenience, but it's a matter of economics. And that study was really pretty revealing as to just what not doing something can, can cost. And somehow or other, we have to be able to begin to focus on a few priorities that get done. I think Ms. Chick's focused on this one, and I would really, commonly that, I think that the 405 and the 10 interchange is, I think, the other one that, at least from a major, major portion of the city affecting huge numbers of people. Those two combined really, to fix those would be billions of dollars' worth of savings. So I commend you and offer to continue to work with you. I mean, I think it's really good you're taking the lead on this, Laura.
Thank you, Mr. Wax. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Goldberg.
The 101 corridor is defined as how?
Actually, the 101 corridor extends beyond the city of Los Angeles, but clearly what we're focusing on is the 101 that start, that starts up the city-county line out in the far west San Fernando Valley and actually goes to the 134-101 interchange. So it's quite a long stretch that goes through the entire San Fernando Valley, bringing commuters downtown.
Okay. I would, I would urge that we continue it all the way to downtown in this look because anybody who goes through the Coangas Pass knows that since that's the only way through, if there is any problem, and I refer you to the, the terrible fatal accident that happened one evening with one of the city's vehicles, that really created havoc all the way through. And so I would just urge that the corridor definition include two downtown Los Angeles. And I will move that as a friendly amendment if you have no objections. Because that, that section there and then the section right about it, Vermont, which continuously stops traffic between Vermont and downtown is, are also in need of some look. And as long as we're looking at the look, if you can only get to the 134, you still haven't gotten into the, to most of, where most of that traffic is going. So if, if you accept that as a friendly amendment as part of the definition, I, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, I, I have no problem with directing the Department of Transportation to include suggestions and recommendations for congestion on the freeway the entire length. The list of projects will stay the same at this point, but when they come back, they can include others.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Goldberg. Mrs. Chick, would you like to be heard for a second time? Or have you?
Oh, no, I was just responding, although I did leave out someone very important involved in our working group, and that's the new Speaker of the State Assembly, Bob Hertzberg.
Thank you, Councilmembers. Does anyone else wish to speak on item number twenty? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on item number twenty, as amended by Councilwoman Goldberg and Chick? Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That item is approved, forthwith. Next item.
Item number twenty-two called special by Councilmember Fuhr.
Mr. Fuhr, item number twenty-two called special by yourself.
I did not intend to call twenty-two special.
Okay. Does anyone wish to be heard on item number twenty-two?
Oh, I think I called it special because I'd like to know what it is. Is, is this the decision on the issue that's been so controversial?
No.
Mr. Wax?
Yeah. The, the controversy, I think, surrounds the proposed one-plus-one approach, which is, is not related to this issue. This issue is, we have, in the fire department, for years, had too few firefighters. The fire department has been wrestling with how to more rapidly recruit and train new firefighters. This represents action to do just that, accelerates the process, and has a class set up for June, I believe.
I support it 110 percent.
Yes, I, I'm sure. And this should be a consensus item, given where we are.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fuhr. Mr. Wax, your answer, your question has been answered. Does anyone else wish to speak on item number twenty-two? Seeing no other council member who wishes to speak, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on item number twenty-two and tabulate the vote?
Ten ayes.
That item is approved. Next item.
Item twenty-four, there's a card from the public on the item.
Okay. Item number twenty-four, we have three cards. Three representatives of ASME Local 3672, Isabel Rosas, Norma Montero, and Cheryl. I can't read the last name, but I think you probably know who you are. Ladies, if you would like to make your way to the podium.
As they come, Mr. President, I'm excused at noon. I understand that there are ten members here. Someone left without your permission, Mr. President.
See how they do that, Mr. Ridley?
I do indeed, and the sergeant should do his job in that regard.
Ms. Rosas?
Actually, we're speaking out of order, if you don't mind. My name is Cheryl Parisi. I'm a staff representative for ASME District Council 36. And today, I am speaking on behalf of approximately 100 executive secretaries employed by the city of Los Angeles. We are actually in agreement with the particular exemption that is presented to you with regard to item number twenty-four, because it is that position and that position only, which is the only remaining executive secretary position in the city which serves in a direct support capacity to an elected official. However, during the course of discussions about that, we raised a number of issues before the Personnel Committee, and Councilwoman Goldberg heard those concerns, was supportive of those concerns, and is recommending, through number five on the report, a consideration of those concerns. Specifically, there are the following. We are concerned with the adoption of the new charter in July. Virtually all of the positions that executive secretaries in the city serve will become exempt. And we're very concerned that there may be future moves to seek to exempt on a case-by-case basis individual executive secretary positions. We want to remind the council that this is the highest promotional classification for clerical personnel in the city of Los Angeles, and as such represents some of the highest quality talent and experience that the city has to offer. And we ask by supporting point number five of the committee report that you would affirm the talent and commitment of the executive secretaries and commit to no further exemptions in this classification. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Norma Montero?
Thank you. I'm Norma Montero, President of Local 3672. And I, too, just want to ask your support. This will not only affect the 100 executive secretaries that we represent, but it will also have an impact on all the secretaries and senior clerk typists that eventually strive to develop their skills and qualify to take these promotional exams as they become open throughout the years. So we're asking at this time that you support a no vote to not consider exemption of any future executive secretary positions that are not direct support of elected officials. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker.
Yes, my name is Isabel Rosas. I'm also a representative of Local 3672 and a longtime city employee coming up through the ranks, entry-level clerk typist, as most of us are that have reached this rank. And I urge your support of Councilmember Jackie Goldberg's number five on this item. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Walters.
Thank you, Mr. President. As someone who regularly opposes these exempt positions, I certainly, we've done it for assist, for general managers and assistant general managers. I certainly oppose the, we haven't done it for, we did it by charter change for general managers and assistant general managers, and then we started going below that, asking for other positions to be exempt. And I've opposed those, and I certainly oppose this one. Secretaries, or the executive secretary is the very top of the clerical career ladder. And to suddenly say to people who are working their way up that career ladder that this position is closed to you and will be open now to anyone whom a non-elected person wishes to hire should not occur. I just think it destroys a very strong career ladder that the city has offered in the past and, in my opinion, should continue to offer. So, councilmembers, I urge you to stop this voting for exempt positions generally and certainly specifically on this one. Vote no.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The Chair recognizes Councilman Fuhr.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let's, let's separate issues for a second. Mr. Tuttle has joined us, but I think there's actually no dispute, as far as I can tell, regarding an exemption for Rick's position. That's at stake. There's agreement about that in the committee. We agreed about that, and I hope that we can move forward, and I appreciate the consensus that emerged around that issue. The only disagreement, and it's really a very mild one, is around this. I, too, the issue is, Ms. Goldberg urged that we support the following. Support the policy position that requests by city officials other than electeds to exempt executive secretary positions from civil service will not be granted. I think that it would take a great deal, that I can't even necessarily anticipate here, to convince me that we should grant such an exemption. In general terms, I'm supportive of that policy, too. The only disagreement, mild as it is, is perhaps around the wording, because from my standpoint, regarding exempt, regarding executive secretary positions for general managers, not Mr. Tuttle's thing about which we should be in concurrence, there may come a time when we say, you know, maybe there's some exceptional circumstances that lead us to want to exempt an executive secretary for this general manager. I can't anticipate them now, but it might exist. So the only question is whether we want to, as a blanket matter today, preclude consideration of such requests if they ever come down the pike at all, or say instead, in general, this is the right policy, but if someone comes forward, we'll consider that issue on its own merits. That's the only disagreement. It's a, it's a mild one, because the general policy, I think, is a good one. I was just reluctant to say that for the future, we would fail to consider any requests, no matter what their merits were, on this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Fuhr. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Goldberg.
Well, without making a policy, we have a slippery slope, and I'm not interested in a slippery slope in this particular area for the reasons that everybody has already mentioned. So I will move item five and the Personnel Committee report, including item five, and ask for you to join me. We have, Mr. Fuhr and I did have a very cordial discussion. It was not, this was, there was no vitriol in this disagreement, but we do disagree. Obviously, there are no policies in the council, unfortunately, that can't by eight votes be overturned anyway. But I do think to tell 100 executive secretaries that we're not willing to make the policy makes them fear that this is going to become routine, and I don't think that's fair, and we should not do that. I would not support any others, other than for elected officials, who are in a particularly different situation and whose executive secretaries frequently have a different set of tensions and issues to deal with. But if others would, then that's, that's something they can do at some subsequent time. We need to establish as policy our desire to say that there is a distinction between being an elected official and being a general manager, and that one of the things that is in that distinction is, is that the position of executive secretary may be an exempt position in one but not in the other. And I would urge you to join me in voting for one, two, three, four, and five, and I will so move.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Before we call on the next speaker, I would like to recognize City Controller Rick Tuttle.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the support which has developed for items one through four, which would provide for the exemption for the controller, for the elected official's position. Also, I also want to indicate my, even though I recognize there's risks in this and so on, I want to indicate my support for five. I've always believed in that. That's the policy. And by the way, that was not a precondition of any negotiation or anything else. That was just, just the, for example, in our office, there's another roughly equivalent position that reports to the chief deputy controller. We have no intention, on my watch, of moving that out of civil service. It's just the elected official line. That's the, that's, that's the firewall that I happen to believe in. I don't see any particular reason why I shouldn't mention, should not mention that now, so I am mentioning it. But I appreciate the support you'd give us on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Controller. The Chair recognizes Councilman Holden.
Rick says it, it's all right, as relates to, so I think it sounded like we have a unanimous vote on this right now. I think that we can all agree that the motion, Ms. Goldberg, should be supported. The worst thing that could happen is that you have a longtime career employee, civil service, wake up one morning and the general manager says, now you're out of here. That's what was happening to the general managers. And then to a few people, and I didn't, decide to put in the ballot, and then they had all that propaganda for a charter which says that's, let's kick them all out of civil service. We're making work better. They're not doing, nothing has changed, except they're not protected. And nobody's firing everybody. They just, they targeting the ones they want to get rid of. And you'll see that happen very, very soon. That'll be very unfortunate. People dedicated, hardworking for the public for so many years, then suddenly find themselves out of a job. That should not happen to anyone, let alone the secretaries who've been there, from clerks, from male persons running them and work their way up, and if you're going to dump them? Not with my vote. So I would think that this should be one that we all can support. And I'm sure there might have been a misunderstanding. Maybe you had the expectation that some general managers would not use it, but this idea to get rid of someone, any excuse, but they would, and we should have that safeguard in place. I support your motion, Ms. Goldberg. Ms. Chick? Ms. Chick, I support Ms. Goldberg. Oh, good.
The Chair recognizes Councilman Wax.
I support number five also. I bet I'm glad Ms. Goldberg said what she did, because it is important to note that policies are policies, and the next time someone comes along and wants something that breaks the policy, eight votes will do it, and I think everyone should be aware of that. And quite frankly, quite often, it works the other way. We have policies where, are broken in, in favor of what the unions want as well as against what the unions want. And I think, I was glad you pointed it out because it's an honest appraisal of the situation. But you make a statement as to what you think is right by the action you take now, and I, I support your action and think it is the right one, but I don't want people to just get carried away thinking, okay, this resolves this question, because I've been here too long to see how policies get so, you know, get broken whenever eight votes decides they should be broken, for whatever reason they decide to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Wax. The Chair recognizes Councilman Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President.
Mr. Ridley Thomas moves the previous question. Is there any objection to the previous question? Ms. Pacheco, you did have your button pushed to speak, but Mr. Ridley Thomas has moved the previous question.
I want to just move the previous question.
Thank you. I'm glad we're in consensus here. Okay, without objection, the previous question has been called for, and without objection, so ordered. We do now have this item before us. Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on the item and tabulate the vote?
Including five.
Ten ayes.
Including five.
Ten ayes.
And the ordinance is over one week.
Ordinance goes over one with, since we did not have 12 votes, and that will be the order. Very good. Next item.
Thank you.
Mr. President, do you wish to recess and go into the special meeting?
I think it would probably be advisable at this time, because we were about to lose a quorum due to some excused absences. So at this time, let us recess the regular meeting and let us go into the special meeting. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll on the special meeting?
Brinson, Chick, Fuhr, Galanter, Goldberg, Hernandez, Holden, Ms. Kowski, Pacheco, Ridley, Thomas, Swarro, ten members present in the quorum. Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We do have one item on the special agenda meeting.
It's an ordinance, second reading, and the committee report was approved last week.
Okay. Is there any council members that wish to speak on special agenda item number one of the special meeting? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on the one item on this agenda and tabulate the vote?
None ayes, one no.
Okay. That item is approved. This is what you call a council manic timeout.
Would someone, you know, I hate when we do things this quickly. Would someone just tell us what we're voting on first?
Office Finance, second reading.
This is the ordinance you voted on last week. And the essence of the ordinance is, under the new charter, those duties that were required for the Office of ORS, Office of Administration and Research, or whatever, has to be included in the, if they're not in the charter, they have to be included in ordinance. There are three functions that this ordinance adds to the, to ORS. One is revenue projection, two is debt management, and three is risk management.
And this would add risk management to, it keeps, in essence, it keeps that in the city administrative office or ORS. Now, when we had that issue discussed last week, I thought it was moved to send it to committee.
No. What was moved to committee was a motion by Mr. Ferraro to delete risk management.
That's right. In other words, to have risk management go to the new, to the new Office of Finance?
No. What was before you last week was an ordinance, was this very ordinance?
Yeah. And Mr. Ferraro's motion was?
Was to take a portion of that ordinance out.
Which was risk management.
Risk management. That motion was referred to committee.
Exactly.
Which means it did not get acted on.
So for those who voted, who wanted to support that motion, our position went to committee.
That's right.
And this is it without that. This here means that risk management remains with the CAO.
That's right.
For now.
For now.
That's right.
Folks, I hate to be throwing cold water on this at the moment, but what I have before me is a second ordinance reading that has just been passed on a nine-to-one vote. If you would like to discuss this any further, I will entertain a motion to reconsider. Otherwise, I am sending this forthwith to the mayor.
Well, I object to forthwith, and then you can, if you want to play that game, I'll say, and you need 10 votes to go forthwith. So let's, the reason we're talking now is because it went through very, very quickly.
I understand, Mr. Wax, but then let's have a motion to reconsider.
Well, my motion was reconsider solely for the purpose of being able to discuss it, as I'm doing now, and I thought, in fact, we had done that.
If we might, I agree with the chair, if you would give us a moment here. The situation is, is there were three functions that were in the ordinance last week. There was a motion to remove one of those. It was sent to committee as opposed to be enacted upon. The ordinance, as is before you today, passed 14 to one last week.
Okay.
And now this is second reading.
So what I want to make it clear is that in supporting this today, this does not preclude us from going further. For those of us who prefer to go further and put risk management into the new Office of Finance, that is in committee now, and we will still vote on that.
Right.
And meanwhile, we're setting this up with just as minimal functions, and more can come later.
Point of order.
No.
Mr. Holden, what is your point?
Point of order. The point is, there are two things. There was no motion reconsider, and finally, Mr. Ferraro voted yes on the matter that's before us. So I don't know what you're talking about.
What the, this one, the motion that's in committee can come back, and you can drop the ordinance that either removes it from ORS or transfers it to another department.
And this doesn't preclude that.
No, it does not preclude it, but it does put risk management in ORS.
For the moment.
For the moment. I'm just saying, I don't want, yes, I just don't want to mislead you that.
No, I realize that. But if you wish to have it in, if you wanted to have it in the new, in Finance, then that motion that's in committee will be the vehicle to do that.
Exactly.
And that motion will come back here.
Yes.
And we can vote on it one way or the other.
Exactly.
Thank you, Mr. Wax. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Chick.
Yes, just for further explanation, Mr. Wax, it's, I'm chair of the committee, and I am committing to you that, if I could have just your attention for a second, I'm not sure what my colleague is saying that might contradict what I'm saying or not, but I'm chair of Government Efficiency. It's been sent, oh, excuse me, to Charter Implementation An-How. And the motion to send it to committee went as follows. You can't, if you take risk management from the CAO, if we don't give it to the CAO now, it's nowhere. And the motion specifically said, when there's a head, a general manager of the Office of Finance, that the committee will hear, as soon as that general manager wants it to be heard, a plan for the collections and a plan, a strategic plan for improving risk management, and then it will come to the full council.
I agree totally. I wanted it clear, because he's confusing me.
Chair recognizes Councilman Holden.
I just want to reiterate that Ms. Ferrara voted for this ordinance last week. I think there was only one no vote, but I don't know, maybe the person didn't understand English or something. But the fact of the matter is that, there was a unanimous vote last week? It was not unanimous?
No, I think it was 14 to one.
14 to one? One no vote? Last week, that's why, so just vote aye.
Thank you, colleagues. What I still have before me is a nine-to-one vote, however, and since that was just a discussion, to clarify the discussion, we have a nine-to-one vote, and we are going to send this forthwith to the mayor.
Now, Mr. President.
Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Mr. Pacheco, Mr. Pacheco has some theories that he's ruminating about, you know, saying that this motion has been sent to the cemetery and so forth, and, Mrs., you shouldn't say things like that about your colleagues, Mr. Pacheco. That motion has life beyond what you anticipate. This is a time of season to, a year to acknowledge the experience of a resurrection and a whole range of things, so don't be heretical in your remarks here.
Possibly we should get back to something, Mr. Ridley Thomas, that we all can agree on here. Next item. That was the only item in the special meeting, so without objection, we will adjourn the special meeting and go back to the regular meeting.
Next item is number 36, called special by Councilmember Walters.
Councilwoman Walters, item number 36, called special by yourself.
It was called special for the purpose of introduction of an amending motion, which corrects the amount of money that the Department of Cultural Affairs is putting into this. It was $70,000, and now it will be $85,000.
Thank you, ma'am. We now have item number 36 as amended by Councilwoman Walters before us. Is there any council member that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on item number 36 as amended and tabulate the vote?
Ten ayes.
That item is approved, forthwith. Next item.
Item number 40, called special, excuse me, 40C, called special by Councilmember Walters.
Item number 40C, Councilwoman.
This is also called special for the purpose of an amending motion, and the amending motion would be to direct the Bureau of Street Services to deliver and pick up necessary traffic control devices for the Earth Day Clean Energy Ride.
Okay. We have item number 40C before us, colleagues, as amended, seeing no council member that wishes to speak. Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on item 40C as amended and tabulate the vote?
Ten ayes.
That item is approved, forthwith on that item also. Next item.
This is the time for comments from the public on non-agenda items.
Okay, before we go into that, colleagues, we are going to continue the closed session items, I believe, until Tuesday, Madam Clerk.
Wednesday.
Wednesday. Madam City Attorney, very good. So the closed session items go till Wednesday. We have one card for public comment, Mr. John Walsh. Mr. Walsh?
Hope you see the story on the front page of the Hollywood Independent, subcontractor fined over worker's death. Now, that worker was on your project, the Hollywood Highland Trizakon Project. You're putting up the money. A worker was killed, and Cal OSHA has fined subcontractor, subcontractor on this city-sponsored project funded by the city to the tune of $98 million, $88,000, and it was an Hispanic worker, El Sangre de la Raza. And maybe there should be some interest among the Hispanic members of the city council to a dead worker. I'm not against, and I'm favor of fighting for the live workers, the living janitors, but the city, the conditions on that project on non-union workers have resulted in the death of this Hispanic worker, and the Cal OSHA has fined $88,000, and McCarthy, the prime contractor, I have been told, will be fined also. Where are the people out there? But this is Jackie's project, and Jackie gets what she wants from the unions, and Jackie sits and gets arrested. And I might point out, now Jackie has something in common with Cesar Portillo, the person she ran against. She spread the fact that he had been arrested, now she'd been arrested. And I asked the city council to do something about all the projects of CRA that you sponsor with money. Do something about the dead workers, the blood of Hispanic workers on the street. Now, The Times wouldn't do this story. I brought it to Bill Boyarsky. He said, we don't do stories like that. He's the worst city editor in the county. And now, The Times isn't going to do this story because Boyarsky's hooked in with Delomo, and Delomo is hooked in, the editor of The Times, and Delomo's hooked in with Jackie. And I was told at The Times, anything about a project that Jackie Goldberg, that would make a Jackie Goldberg project look bad, I, Bill Boyarsky, he, Bill Boyarsky, will not cover. And I'd like to thank, you have been so good as a chairman, Mr. Swarro, that as a Democrat, I am supporting you for Assembly.
That'll put me over the top.
And also, when you leave, we get Janice Hahn. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Be a pleasure serving with you all till July 1st of next year now. Thank you, Councilwoman Goldberg. Do we have any adjourning motions? Are we clear, Madam Clerk? Desk is clear?
Motion's for posting and referral.
Without objection, so ordered. We do not, we have lost a quorum, however, is there any adjourning motions?
Yes.
Okay, let's adjourn. Audience, please rise. Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, members, dear friend of mine, Ms. Virginia Marlowe. She's the wife of Kenny Hahn's chief deputy, Harry Marlowe, whom I worked with over there for about 13 years or so. She was also an educator. She's a teacher at Inglewood High School, invited me there as a deputy when I was deputy to Kenny Hahn, and also the state senator to speak to the kids, to give them motivation to continue on in public life and supporting the communities. She passed away just the other day, at Daniel Freeman Hospital. Services would be held on the 25th at St. Nicholas Catholic Church in Laguna Hills, where they moved to retire. So certainly she's going to be missed. Her husband is Harry Marlowe, children William and Gail, and grandchildren and great-grandchildren are going to miss her as well, as all of us. And I'd like to ask the entire council to adjourn in her memory.
All members?
All members.
All right, and we have another person who, the city employee who just served us all so well. We know him, Otis L. Wells, and Ms. Galanter is going to adjourn in his memory as well, so we'll do, we'll do a co-author this motion. He served the city for 22 years in the Community Development Department, as well as the Community Redevelopment Agency. He developed many of the construction policies, procedures, that to this day formed the basis and the model for the Los Angeles Housing Department Neighborhood Preservation Program. Guy was quite talented. On his leadership, he was responsible for rehabilitation of over 2, over 2,600 residential properties. In aftermath of the Northridge earthquake, he was assigned to the largest recovery area, the largest caseload for rehabilitation services. He was a pioneer in developing relationship between government and people that we all served. He was only 54 years old and passed unexpectedly after a short illness. He would be missed by his family, friends, and many coworkers. Services would be Saturday, 11:00 a.m. at Inglewood Park Cemetery. So Otis did it all for all of us, and we miss him.
All members. Mr. Pacheco?
I would ask that the council adjourn in memory of Jacob Leal. Jacob Leal was three months old when he passed away. He was found deceased in his crib. His parents are Michelle and Michael Leal, who are the children of Rudy, or actually, Michelle is the child of Rudy and Alice Madrid, who owned the Olvera Candle Shop and Rudy's Gifts, both on Olvera Street. They are longtime merchants at Olvera Street. Their daughter, Michelle, the mother of the child who passed away, grew up on Olvera Street. Jacob is survived by his parents, and he has a brother, Joshua. So adjourn in memory of Jacob Leal.
Thank you, Ms. Pacheco. Are there any others? Okay. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
It's going to be a nightmare for parents when they see those things happen.
Mr. Padilla, did you want to announce that the ITGS committee will meet at 1:00 rather than 2:00? Is that correct?
The agenda's been posted. ITGS meets today at 1:00, not the regularly scheduled 2:00.
Okay. And to wish everyone a happy Passover, also a very happy Easter season. This council is adjourned.